It's, uh, 10 o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting for County of Starr, Monday, May 13th. Let the record show that we do have quorum, everyone being present. I'd like to thank everyone here this morning for being with us. Uh, everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. First item is approval of minutes. Moved in second to approve, discussion. Hall and fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item is claims. Mr. Pettis, are they in order?
Yes, the claims are ready. We will review them.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Hall and fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Before we go on with our agenda, if there's anyone from out of town that would like to come before the court at this time, uh, we can do it now, or you can follow the agenda, whatever you all want. We'll go on to our reports. The Gas Department, Mr. Alvarez.
Morning, Judge. Commissioners. My report is in your package. Uh, really don't have anything to add to it. The Gas Department is doing very well at this time. Uh, what's not included in your package is, uh, last week, uh, the report had already been written, but then, last week, we had state auditors auditing the operators qualification component of the, of the gas system. And that's where you grade or evaluate your workers. And I'm happy to say that we did very well. We had no violations. And my employees did ask to see if there was any chance of a race.
Oh, I'm sorry? I was looking at the numbers.
I'm kidding. I'm kidding. If there was a race, because they did so, they did so well.
We're, we're looking at it, you know. We're, we're looking at it.
Any questions? I know it's not budget time, Judge. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. Transfer station?
Morning, Your Honor and Commissioners. Mr. Gonzalez is not here to give the report, but, uh, the packet is before you. And, uh, as you can see, uh, we do have a surplus this month. Uh, happy to report that we do have a surplus of $8,938.96. And, uh, like to take the opportunity to thank, uh, the Commissioners because, uh, all of them, one way or another, have helped our department. For example, uh, with, uh, the patchwork and Commissioner Garza helped us with the, uh, transporta, uh, transporting, uh, the heavy equipment that we had, and then he brought it back for us. So, like I said, all of the Commissioners have helped us in, in one way or another, and, you know, we're very thankful for that. Any questions?
Any questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Al.
Thank you.
Uh, Texas District Collector?
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. My report is in front of you. This is the collections for April 2019. The total countywide collections for April the 19th were 1,000, 1,026,590. On April 2018, there were 844,959. There was a total collection of 181,631 dollars more than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected 219,749 dollars less than last year. Our total, uh, total current collections for Starr County entities were 347,495. Current collections in April 2018 were 270,672. There was a total current colle, current collections, I'm sorry, for 76,753 dollars more than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected 68,346 dollars more than last year. Our total delinquent collections for April 2019, just for Starr County, were 302,480. Total delinquent collections in April 2018 were 264,986. There was a total delinquent collection of 37,493 dollars less than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected 217,179 dollars less than last year. As of April the 30th, the Tax Office has collected 95 percent of the protected collections. Protected collections remaining were 759,398 dollars and 30 cents. Do we have any questions?
Any questions?
That is my report. No questions?
Thank you, Ms. Al.
Thank you.
Uh, County Clerk, Mr. Gonzalez.
Morning, Judge Commissioners.
Good morning.
For the month of April, the County Clerk's office, uh, did see an increase in some filings. In a right-of-preservation fee, uh, we had 159 new filings for a total of 176 dollars. Our records management, we had 506 new filings for a total of 6,452. Copies were 201 for a total of 3,049.20. Our marriage license to the state were 33 new ones for a total of 1,171.50. Our records archive fee was 458 new filings for a total of 6,292 dollars. Our birth certificates that go to the state, 16 new filings for a total of 32.40. And then our birth state, 110 new filings for a total of 225. And then, uh, a total of 737 new filings came in for the County Clerk for a total of 17,602 dollars and 10 cents. And 451 new filings for the courthouse security for a total of, uh, 674 dollars. The total due to the treasure for the month of April was 36,114.20. Uh, we had a total amount of, uh, 2,671 new filings, so we did see an increase in April for our records management and, uh, archives. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Sheriff's Department?
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Good morning. The total revenues for, for the month was 248,714. We currently are housing 82 federal inmates, and we've got 77 Idalbert County inmates and, uh, 81, uh, from our agency. We have a total of 240 total inmates, and, uh, we have collected 17,257 more this year, uh, at this time than from April of last year.
Any questions? Thank you, Chief.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Commissioners. This is the revenue for April 2019. It's 159,323.50, and we have a decrease of 61,692.50 for the month of April 2019 compared to the month of April 2018. And we also have a decrease of 54,691.50 for the collections of April 2019 compared to the month of March 2019. We have other collections of 127.43, and the grand total for April is 159,450.93.
Notice you don't have the, the rentals?
No, we don't have them anymore.
You don't have any rents?
No.
Okay. Any questions?
It has showed decrease due to the traffic being slower, or traders, and everything. Well, that's part of it, but, I mean, we showed, uh, because there's a lot of, uh, the customs, they've been closing down, and many people are going now, they park their cars next to the bridge, and they walk right, uh, Mr. Garza.
Yes, they've been walking. So pedestrians, we've been having a lot of increase.
Pedestrians have increased a lot, but all those cars, no.
No. That's, that's the problem.
Yeah, when, when...
But it's picking up this month. It's going up again.
They were closing the other, I don't know how many, every day they've been closing for 20 minutes.
It's almost every day. They've been closing, uh, two to three times a day for 20 minutes.
The whole bridge, all the way down.
There, for a while, they only had one lane, and it would back up traffic for miles into Mexico.
Yes.
So, uh, people would rather cross walking, and, and that...
And there's taxes in the other side. They pick them up real quick.
Yeah. That, that's part of it.
Yeah, that's why we're hiring professionals. Let's hope it gets better.
Thank you. Treasure? Mr. Gonzalez?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Uh, you have my report for the month of April in front of you. If you could please just follow along with me. Uh, for, uh, the general fund, the ending balance was 5,6868.29 in 2018. It was at 2,643,662.23 for a difference of 2,363.206.6 more. Uh, for the Roden Bridge, the ending balance for 2019 was at 856,035.49. At this time last year, it was at 854,354.5 for a difference of 1,681.44 more. For the, um, Enterprise Funds, the ending balance for 2019 was at 671,601.25 versus last year, 2018. It was at 868,258.68 for a difference of 196,657.93 less as compared to last year. And for the Drainage District, we have an ending balance of 955,936.10 compared to 2018. It was, last year was at 671,142.13, a difference of 884,793.97 more as compared to, to last year. The grand total for 2019 fund balance, um, is at 7,490,441.13. At this time last year, it was at, it was at 5,37,417.9 for a difference, a positive difference of 2,453,023.54. Uh, concludes my report.
Combine General and Roden Bridge?
Yes, all of them together. Yes, that is correct. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Auditor, Mr. Pettis.
Morning, Judge Commissioners. Our audit report, uh, for the month of April were seven months, uh, of the fiscal year. I'll start, uh, with the cash reconciliation reports. Uh, we show a general fund cash available reconciled balance of 4,439.617.12. Uh, Roden Bridge Fund cash available of 654,956.42, and the payroll clearing account available amount of 610,0969.79. Again, this report shows the first seven months of the fiscal year, uh, or the percentage of year elapsed of 58.09 percent. Our general fund expenditure report shows year-to-date amount of 11,028,741, or 60.66 We have a breakdown, uh, of the general fund on the next couple of pages. There's quite a few accounts there, I won't go over each one. We'll go to the expenditure report for the Roden Bridge Fund. Uh, as of 4/30/2019, year-to-date amount, 3,026,200, or 49.34 percent, well below the The, uh, revenue reports for the general fund, again, for the first seven months of the fiscal year, show a total of 13,867,843, or 76.26 percent. Uh, Roden Bridge shows 4,483,667, or 73.10 percent. When we move on to the Enterprise Fund revenues, International Bridge is at 1,292,137, or 48.6 percent, with expenditures of 1,194,814, at 44.94 percent. Uh, the Gas Operating System, revenues of 633,335, at 60.61 percent of the budget, and expenditures at 577,702, or 55.28 percent. The Solid Waste Transfer Station, fees of 792,625, or 58.71 percent, with expenditures of 906,577.67.13 percent. On the last page, you've got the, um, debt. Uh, total debt is 2,340,086 dollars as of April 30th, 2019. Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pettis. One question, Mr. Pettis, on, on the Starr County, uh, the, the last page, on City of Roma, we owe 853 currently?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that was at, at one point, someone...
How much is it right now? Eight hundred fifty...
Eight fifty, 853 pounds. So we, we...
Yeah, we've done...
I guess we paid off on...
We did, yeah. Anything else?
Any other question?
Thank you.
Okay. I guess that is our reports. So we'll go on to item number six, the, uh, vendor's list. Mr. Pettis? Moved in second to approve, the vendor's list, discussion. Hall and fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item seven is a proclamation, uh, and this is to approve a proclamation proclaiming May as Elder Abuse Prevention Month. Is there's anyone, anyone here representing that you want to come forward, and please identify yourself for, for the camera?
Morning.
It, it's just for the camera.
I'm sorry. Okay. Morning. Uh, my name is Frank... Good morning. My name is Frank Jimenez. I work with Adult Protective Services, and company media is Mr. Vero Piz, Anavela, Val Zamora, with, uh, with Maribel Gonzalez and Mr. Hugo Gonzalez. Uh, first of all, I want to go ahead and thank Judge Loi Vera, Commissioner Juan Álvarez, Ruben Sainz, Raúl Peña, and Mr. Loi Garza for allowing us to be here and proclaiming 2019 as Elder Prevention Month for the Starr County area. Almost a decade ago, the U.S. Census Bureau reported 3.8 million people in Texas that reached the age of six or older. That number has expanded for triple by, it's gonna triple by the year of 2050. This fast-growing population is expected to strong impact on the families and their communities. National research shows as many as one out of 10 older Americans are abused or neglect each year in every case known to the program and agency. 24 were unknown. Available data for adult protective services agents show that increase of trend in the reporting on the elder abuse. In 2018, there were, uh, there were 257 intakes for the Starr County area, and 101 were validated basically on the investigations. Our elder Americans are vital, contributing members of society, and the welfare of everyone's, everyone's business. Raising awareness and talking steps to prevent in our communities by educating our public on their issues and what to do when they suspect of any abuse, neglect, or financial exploitation on the elderly. Our disabled adults are critical. All our needs are suspicious for, to report to Adult Protective Services. And all this information is confidential whenever you file the report. Reports can be made to the 1-800-252-5400, or the hotline for the elder abuse. Thank you very much for allowing us to be here this morning and allowing us to present, be presenting this information to you, Judge.
You said all those calls, anybody report somebody's confidential?
See, all the, all that information is confidential, so...
I've had some problems there in my precinct, and I've, I've called, I told the secretary to call it in, I don't know what they, but I'd like to have a conference, because there was an abuse of this, the same member, in fact, the daughter of a lady, which was supposed to be the provider. The husband came and complained, but they were afraid to file a complaint because of retaliation. That's a problem. It should be confidential and, and, you know, it should be investigated. I'd like to have a card of you guys, how to go to the process of filing a complaint, because we do have problems in that respect here in the county, at least in my precinct.
Appreciate it, Commissioner. And again, all this information is confidential as far as the reporting to the hot views, uh, the actual abuse hotline. And, uh, it is everybody's business to ensure our safety of our elderly and populations, um, because they're more vulnerable, they, you know, they're more, um, actually victims of a, a crime of, of any nature on that perspective. So I encourage each and every one of you, uh, if you ever suspect any abuse, to go ahead and call it in, and we'll surely go ahead and investigate.
I sure will.
I have a motion in the second, discussion. Under discussion, I'm gonna ask a question, because I don't know the answer, but, do you all look into abusive elderly when it's done by someone with, uh, mental health issues?
Yes.
Do you do that too?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to have your card, too. Uh, you know, 'cause I, I do get a lot of those, and, you know, we, we usually send them to MHMR, Border Region, but maybe you all could help also.
Correct. Especially if, uh, they're under the probate court. You know, if any person is under the probate court and there is that abuse, I think that's important, because we have to notify probate court at any time that we have an investigation, if they're the guardianship.
I'll go ahead and call for the question. Uh, hall and fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And I do want to thank all of you, you know, for, for the work that you all do. We seldom hear about elderly abuse, because it's kind of swept under the, the carpet or the rug. Uh, we hear about child abuse and others, but, uh, you know, there is a lot of elderly abuse, and, and I thank you all for the work that you all do, and especially in our community.
What's, you say you have, you report elderly abuse, and you find that it's true. What's the next, where does it go to? Is that to be prosecuted, or...
When we receive, uh, let's say it's a physical abuse, exploitation, type, it's gonna be in a lower offense, we notify the law enforcement, the law enforcement, the agent, and then we're done with our case, we send the conclusion to the law enforcement.
You have a, a, a provider taking care of a woman, or, or any patient there? She doesn't come forward to see her, or doesn't, or takes off and leaves her alone, or, or...
On that department, we have another agent, another agent, another department called a facility, another one who investigates the provider. Of course, we go and investigate, and we go and talk to the home care to find out, and give them the time sheet, and all the duty they have to do, and then we try to, to do everybody. And then we get a conclusion, and then we, we think this case needs to be referred to the facility, the people who's in charge of the providers, we need to give the case already to them.
Yeah, because she's left alone, but she's supposed to be working. She falls down, she's, she's there laying down for two, three hours, four, five hours. Is that a abuse?
Yes. Especially if, uh, they're diagnosed with dementia, Alzheimer's, and the state doctors say that they cannot be alone, they need 24 hours supervision.
Okay.
Well, uh, I guess all in favor of the proclamation, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Again, thank you all very much. You all want the, the whole of proclamation? Thank you. Item made is, uh, to approve a contract between the County of Starr and the U.S. Department of Justice, the Marshal Service prisoners. Chief, you, or you want me to cover it, whatever you want. Uh, this is a new contract. We've been talking about this for, for a while, about the sheriff and, and the chief and their staff negotiating a new contract with the marshals to get paid more per prisoner. And this new contract is that. They, they finally came up with a number. Uh, they're going, they were paying us $52, uh, a day per prisoner, and now they're gonna pay us 53, uh, $55 a day per prisoner. So that's gonna increase our, our revenue sum at the, at the jail, so, chief, to you and the sheriff and everyone that was involved, congratulations, and we certainly thank you. We need a motion to...
I want to approve the contract, you know?
Can I have a motion in a second? Discussion? Hall and fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Items nine and 10 are some refunds, uh, adjustments. Uh, Ms. Alinas, I don't know what these are, but you want to elaborate? Let, let's take number nine first.
Um, the reason it creates a refund, it's on various accounts totaling to 2,151.50 due to adjustments made in the appraisal district, and when adjustment is made, and, uh, and some of the accounts, they have to go three to five years, so it creates a refund, uh, when all the taxes are paid.
These are, these, these refunds are made by, are they already made by the appraisal district or not?
No, they re, they're...
They are approving the adjustment?
They approve the adj, they make the adjustments based on the information they get from the taxpayers. They approve it by the, by the board, and then they send us the adjustment. When an adjustment is made and the taxpayer pays their, their taxes, it creates a refund based on, on the value of the property that was adjusted. So this is, this is various accounts. This is not only one. This is various accounts, uh, and altogether, you know, it amounts to that, that amount of money.
Well, so these are several accounts?
Yes.
You know, and, and I'm, I'm going to jump now to, uh, number 10, because they're both having to do with the same thing. This is for years 84, 1984 to 2012, uh, and I'm glad the attorneys are here. I was under the impression that after 10, 20 years, there's nothing we could do.
Right, and you are correct, if I may...
Go ahead, go ahead.
Just for the record, Michael Gano, Leinbarger. Judge, you're absolutely correct, and, and these are actually two different scenarios. Uh, the first being, uh, the, the refunds Ms. Alinas is referring to are your customary, pretty, pretty much monthly refunds when people apply for, uh, different exemptions or they reduce the taxable value of the property. That generates those refunds, and that's why there's many of those accounts in that particular line item. Uh, number 10, what happened was there was a property that was foreclosed on many years ago, or back in 2015. Uh, prior to 2015, this property was foreclosed on, and that property owed taxes as of, back in 1984. Um, so the property was, there was a bid made by the city of Rio Grande, uh, to purchase that property, because they wanted to build a lift station on that piece of property. So they bid the, they, they offered a bid for 20,000. It was taken to all the different entities, and they approved that bid, so basically the city bought that foreclosed property. But what happened was no one found out for four years until four years later, when the city actually started to move on developing that lift station, when they appeared and started fencing off or, or making improvements on the property. The property owner showed up and said, hey, what are you all doing? Make a long story short, that account had been double assessed by the appraisal district. So it wasn't till Rio Grande really started to do something with the property that it was discovered that there was a double assessment... was discovered that there was a double assessment, so we had to undo the sale. So, we had to go back to the state, to the state court upstairs, and basically file what's called a petition to vacate that sale. So, now we're having to refund the 20,000 to the city of Rio Grande, because that property never should have been sold in the first place, since it was double assessed, and the original owner had actually paid the tax on his account. But he hadn't, he hadn't paid the tax on the second account. And again, these are very few, you know, these problems come up occasionally, not very often, thankfully, but these are problems that if the, if Starr County has an account, or the appraisal district has an account that's double assessed, until something triggers it, we really don't find those problems, and that's what happened in this case. So, we're, we're trying to, and we have to go before every entity, the, you know, obviously, the county, the city, and everyone, to get this money refunded to the city, so they can entertain some type of a, a private sale now with that individual.
Michael, but, but, but I'm still confused. And that's, that's fine, you know, I understand that, but how can we go back to 84? You know, if someone came in and said, "Hey, you know, I paid taxes in early 1900s. I've got receipts." Are we entitled to go back that far?
No, absolutely not. That, that's very different, Judge, because in that case, let's say someone paid, in, in Amay this case, in Ms. Alinas's case, where they're entitled to certain refunds, the appraisal district can only go back a, a very short number of years. It depends on type, what, what type of exemption it is, whether it's home stand disability, veterans exemptions, we have all these different exemptions. They can only go back usually two to three years, in some cases, five years, but in no cases do they go past that. But this case is very different, because the, the property actually belonged to the county, the city, the school. All of y'all owned that property as of 2014. When that prop, when y'all foreclosed on that property, you owned it.
Right.
And the only reason why we're looking, why you're looking, looking at 84 as a tax year, is because when we foreclosed on it, it was for all those taxes. So, all of y'all held that property in trust. Y'all made the decision to sell it to the city of Rio Grande for the 20,000 that they offered, and now, four years later, we realize that it was a double assessed property, so we're having to undo it.
So, what, what you're asking for a refund for is only the 20,000?
Right.
Not for taxes that were paid in 84 or anything like that?
That is correct, Judge, and I'll, I'll tell you that. That 20,000 that the city offered was not for the entire amount of taxes that was owed. It was prorated. But I think when you look at the account, which we really shouldn't be looking at the 84 tax here, because those taxes are actually wiped out when they got struck off, and then you accepted that $20,000 bid. So, what we're doing is undoing that, and the appraisal district has already removed that account. So, it's not like we can go back. We're, we're gonna undo it, but we're not gonna be able to resell it, because that account does not exist. The appraisal district has since removed the account. So, again, the gentleman who actually owns the valid account, if that makes any sense, has actually paid his taxes. So, we're gonna refund it, because I know it sounds rather bizarre...
We're gonna refund him?
We're gonna refund the city. The city of Rio Grande was a purchaser...
Right.
...of that property. So, we're gonna refund, and then, obviously, the county is, is, everyone's gonna get back their portion. The city, the city of Rio Grande, or, in this case, what you're, what you're undoing is the, the 4,000 and some change, or 5,000. I think it's 2,000 and some on, on each account.
And what happens to the property owner, the original property owner?
Nothing, because his account is, the, the valid account...
So, it's his property?
It's his property, and he's actually paid up on his taxes. I think he owes very, he owes a very small amount.
That makes it fair.
It is fair, you know, and again, you know, I, I know it sounds terrible, Judge and Commissioners, but this is one of those, those problems that, you know, the appraisal district had a double assessed count, and we don't find out about it until something happens, and that's exactly what happened in this case.
We just don't like the refund.
Trust me, neither do I, because that means I did all that legal work. I did the entire foreclosure, the lawsuit, the sale. I did all of that, and I'm having to do the undoing of all that, and we don't, we obviously have to refund the attorney's fees too, so I lose a lot of money in doing that.
How did you get a clear title when you were the property owner? You weren't entitled search, right?
We do, we do. What, what happened is that it, we run the, they, what they do is they physically look at the property. So, we did a, a site by publication. So, we still did, we did everything the proper way. We, we got, we obtained service through doing a site by publication. Everything went through the proper way, but it wasn't until that we have two accounts. One was paid...
But you go and run a title search, it show up that there's two owners on the same property, ain't it?
Well, the title search is just gonna bring the, the initial deed that has the owner and how he acquired the property. It's not gonna, the title search has nothing to do with the, the different account numbers established by the appraisal district.
But you go and write title search, it shows up that there's two, two guys are paying, paying taxes. One is defaulted, and the other is still active.
Not necessarily, Commissioner. The difference, a title search is gonna search everything that is filed of record with the county, with the county records, in case you have lien holders. And that's, you're identifying the owners of the property and lien holders that may have filed a lien on the property. So, a title search searches everything in the district clerk's records, property records. They, they do not do a search at the tax office. What they have is an account number that we give them, and that's how they start the process.
Yeah, but let me go back, excuse me for my...
No, no, that's fine.
If you go out there, and you, you have to run it, you have to get a clear title to sell that property, make, do a title search, and then, okay, this is a rightful owner, we're gonna sell it, right?
Yes.
So, what happened to the other one? There are two owners.
They were both assessed to the same owners. The same owner, actually, they were both under his name, under two different accounts, but he was just paying on one. With the same, it was the same owner with the same address. So, that, that, and I know it's really hard to understand, but this...
It's kinda hard, because if they just caught it there, the, the guy who's doing the title search said, "Well, hold on, we got two people here paying taxes on the same property."
Well, Commissioner, with all due respect, we're, we're looking at two different things. A, a title report is only gonna give me, and you're absolutely right, they're gonna give me the, the property, the description of the property, and the owner, and that's in fact what they gave us, is we have this gentleman, he's the owner, here's his address, and this is the, the legal description of the property. But there was a second account created by the appraisal district. So, regardless of which account number we would have given the, the abstracter who does the, the title, the title search, they would have come back with the same owner, same property description, but it's not their job to go to the appraisal district to make sure that there's only one account. So, again, it wasn't until it was actually sold, you know, and we had, the only reason we do title search is for due process. We can identify the owners and the, the lien holders to give notice of the lawsuit. But there's, there's a major, not that there's a major disconnect, but they're two totally different processes. Because a title report has nothing to do with the appraisal district as far as the accounts that were created.
I understand, I understand. That has nothing to do with the appraisal district. My deal is, when you go and buy a property, and like, we did the county, we sold it, we should have had a clear title, and we're bonded by what the, the title company gave us, and it was sold, it belonged to the county. So, and that responsibility of the, of the title company to pay that, that money that was, had to be returned? He was the one, you paid for, for a title policy, didn't you, or no?
We did, but again...
Well, that's what the title policy is for, make sure that, that you're the rightful owner, and if something goes wrong, the title company has to pay back what they certified that it was yours.
The title company, the policies that they issued, Commissioner, are just to guarantee that there's no other outstanding and unaccounted-for property owners and/or lien holders.
There were two.
No, no, it was the same person.
Not we're the owners, the county are the owners. That's why we sold it.
Mr. Garza, it's as if, yeah, it's, it's, but it's, we're not talking about two different owners.
I thought that we always hire and go buy, get a, a title policy on a property that we own, because they're gonna guarantee you that that property is yours, and that's, and that is insured.
Well, like you said, what triggered it was the city of Rio Grande trying to put the lift station in.
Right, and, 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 and trust me, Commissioner Garza, every...
I'm not gonna argue with, that's what I, that was my understanding. And when I go buy a property, I guess, for a title policy, that ensures that I'm the rightful owner, and if something goes wrong, like here, they give me my money back.
Okay, let me, now, the difference with the title company is if once, if you, if you consummate the sale through a title company, the title policy is gonna ensure that there's no other outstanding liens that can be, or claims that can be made against a property. That's one. Then you also pay for a tax certificate, but that's different, because that doesn't happen in, in a foreclosure sale. But you actually, they certify that there's no other outstanding taxes on that property. But that's a different service that you pay for.
But you have to be, and it ensures you that you're buying the property from the right owner, the right owner, the prior owner. That's where they go back as far as it started.
And, and in this case, we foreclosed on the right owner, but the problem is, on an account that did not exist.
The title company should pay these 20,000. I don't know.
I would be happy if they did.
That's what I'm saying. That's what, that's what they insurance for, ain't it, right?
Well, in this, in this case, well, it's a little, it's a little different, but, again, Commissioner, I...
That's just my opinion, you know.
And it's a very valid opinion, and you, you are on the right track there.
We don't have to...
No, 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 you're actually on the right track. This is just a little different of a case, and, and trust me, it pains me to be here to have to undo this sale, because it's something that we had done several years ago, and, you know, it's, it's very, it's been a, a, you know, more of a burden for the city, because they were actually under a certain time crunch with, with TCQ to, to build this lift station, so...
And I agree with the city, because we, we sold them something that had a title policy, and they were ready, they bought it because they, we were the owner, barely not.
You know, and I'm not, I'm not blaming the blame with anybody, but once we discovered the problem, the appraisal district deleted the account, and now we're left to try to undo everything that happened as a, as a result of that, that action. So, all we can do is try to undo it. And again, I wish I could represent to you that we'll never have these problems again, but a lot of these problems do not come to head until we actually, something triggers them, but they're...
How much, how much did the title policy cost?
They usually run anywhere from, I think, 225 to about $550. Depends on, from $225 up to $550 per, per tract. And we actually, when we assess, when we, we incur that cost, when we file the lawsuit, that cost gets tacked on to the actual delinquent taxpayer. The county doesn't pay for that. And then, once we collect on that, we reimburse the, the title company for their fees.
Any other question, comment?
No.
Okay, is there a motion to refund?
Thank you, Ms. Alinas.
That'd be for nine and 10, Commissioner?
Yes.
Motion in a second to refund. Any further discussion? Alvin Fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
I'll still be around if you, if we want to ask more questions.
I'm not gonna argue with you, but I'm trying to tell you is, is for the public to know, that actually, if you go and buy a title policy, you don't have to spend money on that, because it's worth it.
No, it's still absolutely worth getting a title policy.
That's what my belief, that I will go buy a title policy to be insured, what I paid for, and in fact, that it doesn't, it's not nothing.
You're absolutely correct, Commissioner. That is still the best advice to give.
That's right, I know that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 11 is to take action to approve a memo of understanding between the County of Starr and Simplifile. Strong side.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners, again. This is a, an MOU that we're requesting to get into, I guess, understanding with Simplifile. Some of our customers wanna use them, that they use them already. We have EPN and CSC that we use right now, when land deeds are filed, and they go to those companies, it comes to us. And Simplifile is another company that does this type of work, and so they're wanting to get on with us as well. This is just the, the MOU, you know, prior to...
Is, is there any fee for the county on this?
Uh, we're gonna look into that, Judge. Of course, this is just asking for, just a permission to look into it, and once we get all that, we'll come back to Commissioners' Court to, to give you all the fees and everything for it.
Motion to approve, Judge.
Thank you.
Moved in second. Alvin Fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 12 is to accept the lease payment in the amount of $1,000.
Second.
Moved in second. Alvin Fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 13 is also to approve a check in the amount of $4,133.27 from Gold Tiller Claim Management.
Move.
Moved in second to approve. Discussion? Alvin Fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 14 is an action item, is to approve and adopt the Starr County personnel manual amendment number six for policy on overtime compensation.
Court on changing the maximum hours for our, on compensatory time on employees. It shall change to 80 hours, 180 hours for roadhands, and 240 hours for law enforcement and firefighters.
80 hours for who, only?
80 hours for everyone. 120 hours for roadhands.
120? You know, we were thinking 160.
160?
Yeah, 160, that's what we have, 160.
Okay, we, we can approve it with that change, if that's what you all want. And 240 for law enforcement.
Yes.
I just moved on to that, with the correction of 160.
Okay.
For roadhands.
I have a motion in a second to approve. Discussion? Alvin Fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Let the record show that on that one, it's with a correction of 160 for roadhands. Item 15 is to approve the Starr County Unincorporated Area Nuisance Abatement Program. Okay, this is the, the wee lot, I guess, for lack of a better word, that we had talked about. Where did Mr. Ganales, he live?
We don't know where he went.
Yeah, see if you can find him, because, you know... Let's skip over that one, and we'll get back to it. Okay, let's skip to item 16. Okay, these are budget amendments, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, and 20 are budget amendments. Are they in order, Mr. Pettis?
I understand, why are 22?
No, those are corrections. I'm sorry, Mr. Pettis.
I'm only waiting for the...
Move in second to approve. Discussion? Alvin Fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Items 21 and 22 are budget corrections. Are those in order?
Those are in order.
I just moved on.
Move in second to approve. Discussion? Alvin Fair, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 23 is a possible action on tax abatement agreement for the Starr Solar Ranch Rose.
Good morning, Your Honor Commissioners. We're here today to finally bring you an initial presentation from one of the solar projects that we've been working on. We'd like for you to learn a little bit about the company, that we hope to begin discussions about potential abatement in the near future, a little bit about what their project entails, and...
Is it Star Solar?
It is, um, in, off of Loma Blanca up in the western... Yes, sir, and, and I'm actually, I'm gonna, I'm gonna introduce Mr. Bill Weber, who represents CapRock, and also has been working closely with us on his project, to answer any further questions, and to give you an overview of the project. Bill?
Judge and Commissioners, pleasure. Thank you so much for the time today. I'm here to help you understand, or talk about the project a little bit. If you have any questions specifically, if not, I can sort of run through a, a general overview, if that would be helpful.
This is a project of 12, 12, 12, 12, right?
That's correct, sir. Yes, it's a, it's on, as Ms. Benavita said, it's, it's on Loma Blanca Road, about four and a half miles north of US 83, on the eastern side of the road. Right at that point on Loma Blanca, there is a transmission line, an AEP transmission line, that connects into a substation on the west side of the road there.
We won't have anything that comes in, that brings...
Project, if you, do you have any specific questions, or I could just talk in general about it?
Do you need to approve the abatement?
No, sir, to begin a discussion.
So, there's no, no action taken?
Pardon me?
Just only information.
Yeah, it's just, just information.
Okay.
Any, no questions?
Any questions?
No.
Okay, let the record show that I did not participate in anything.
Thank you.
I do have a conflict. Thank you. It is now...
Here's the...
Oh, Mr. Ganales. Let's go back to... It is now, oh, Mr. Gonzalez, let's go back to, what item was that?
Fifteen.
Item fifteen, and this is the, the news is, the witty, the witty lot.
Yes, Judge, Commissioners, I apologize, it's a Monday, we've got docket coming up, and we've got some inmates that need attention. Yes, I had not received, but I have reviewed the policy as submitted, I believe that it should pass, I recommend it, it will help alleviate the situation and the safety, that sometimes these lots that are abandoned, that end up threatening the livelihood of the neighbors, when you have weeded lots that have overgrowth, I recommend that the Commissioners' Court adopt these procedures.
Witty lots plus trash and, any nuisance.
The nuisance, anything that's a danger and a health, to safety of our citizens can be, can fall under this umbrella.
Who's gonna enforce this?
The Commissioners, that's who the code assigns.
Well, this is to charge the people.
So in other words, can you explain a little bit more on the policy?
Well, essentially what it is, is what we've had before, we have situations where we have people that abandon the residence for whatever reason, it gets, starts getting overgrown with weeds, with brush, and then, nature takes over.
We're gonna be able to go in there and clean them up.
That's correct. You start, you start having snakes, you start having people that start going into the residences.
How will they get reimbursed, or the county?
Well, the thing is that we will be able to, I believe it's the liens, that we'll be able to place on the properties, that if someday they do get, become taxes, that's the general idea of how we may get, may get reimbursed.
Mr. Gonzalez, is it only in the, outside the city limits?
No, it's just, this is, this is a-
The whole precinct, the whole county.
The whole county, that is correct. However, however, you have-
No, 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 this is only an unincorporated.
That was what I was gonna say, that you have situations where you have overlapping city municipalities have the first crack at it, essentially.
They have that policy already, yeah.
Yes, correct, that's what I was about to mention, that cities have that, they have the municipal ordinances, they have a little bit broader authority than Commissioners do, because they can actually create laws that are not prescribed, we can only do what the state authorizes us.
But we go in there and spend precinct funds to clean this, and some of these lots will take a couple of thousand dollars to clean them up, I'm talking labor, fuel, wear tear machines.
There is nothing in this, in this policies and procedures, Commissioner, that says that you must. There is nothing here that says that you must, that you shall, there's no shall.
I know there's gonna be a cost, but it don't bother me, the thing of the people that complain a lot, you know, it's a problem, we have a huge problem, at least I'm at my precinct, you know, we have a problem where flooding is created due to the lots that are very, are weedy, you know, we got a lot of brush and all this kind of stuff, okay. What's the procedure to, we can just go in there, do we have to notify them, or what?
It varies from case to case, Commissioner, if there's an abandoned lot, there's one procedure, if there's a, when somebody actually resides there, and is creating a health hazard, it's a different procedure.
What are these abandoned, not abandoned lot, the people are up north, they haven't been here for two years, five years, six years, and just they're all brushed.
And in every, well, my office would be happy to work with you on the procedures for each and every situation, Commissioner, that's not a problem.
And how are you gonna figure out to charge those people on the, on the, you know, do we have to give the hourly work, or what, so we can, okay, we clean up this lot, it belongs to so-and-so, this is how much work we put in there?
Specificity, Commissioner, again, varies from case to case, and we'll sit down and we'll, we'll work it out.
I know, some will take four, five hours, but some will take a couple of days.
Correct.
It's a good, it's a good project, Judge, and Mr. Gonzalez, but I wanna make sure that we don't get in trouble by going into somebody's property, trespassing-
Correct.
-using county equipment on private property.
And that, and that, Commissioner, go ahead.
Let me interject in here, what I would suggest is that, before you go in-
Advise the owners.
Yeah, and the planning department can have, like, much like the liquid attorneys, yeah, and we post that they've got thirty days to clean it, and if they don't, then the county's gonna go in, subject to this. The first property I'm gonna start with is the old water district, it's very dirty, but they need to be cleaned for the- Yeah, and then we had thought about adding the cost to their taxes, but I don't think we can do that, can we?
Well-
Thank you, Judge, I'm actually glad you invited me up here, because I didn't want to invite myself up here. Actually, I just got back from the Texas Municipal League Conference this past weekend at the island, and I did an entire presentation on this very item, and we are starting to work more closely with cities and counties to identify those properties. If a property is abandoned, and they're not maintaining the lot, there's about a 99% chance that they're delinquent on their property taxes, and in those cases, you really should be using our office to fast-track the litigation, so we can foreclose on the property, it makes, you know, and I applaud Mr. Gonzalez for what he's doing, because he's doing actually the right thing, but that is, I'm sorry? Okay, but what happens is that obviously, you know, it requires that you all spend that money, and if that property's located within the city, the city is tasked with spending all that money, and you place a lien on the property, and hopefully you can recover that money down the road, many times you don't. So what I'd like to do is I'll meet with your staff after this meeting, and anytime he identi, I think you need to start with that, go ahead and do that process, and anytime you identify a property that you've had to, you know, go out there three or four times within a year, let our office know, we'll order the title, we'll fast-track that litigation so we can foreclose on that property, so you guys don't have to do this for three, four, or five, six years on end, and that, that's been, what's been going on in the past, is that this goes on forever. Now, the good thing is that what we do is free of cost to the county, as you know, you know, we only get paid that 15% we collected, and that gets paid by the delinquent taxpayer. So you have two options, either one, you can condemn a property and go through the eminent domain process, but you have to go through your retained counsel to do that, and that can cost you from $5,000 to $10,000 per property, or you call us, and we do it for free. So it makes, you know, to me, and again, that's part of the services we provide. So again, I'll meet with your staff after the meeting, I think it's a very necessary step in the very beginning, you know, maybe do that for the first couple of times, and you know, after two or three times, if you see that they're not responding to you all having to maintain the property, then I'll have your staff contact my office, identify those properties, we'll fast-track the litigation, you know, get a judgment on it, and then start the foreclosure proceedings, so you're not stuck with this property for so many years.
So actually, what you're trying to say, well, would the county be able to attach that amount of money that we spend there to the-
Absolutely, you would file what's just called a notice of lien, anytime the county or the city has to expend money to maintain the property because of, the property owner fails to do it, all you have to do to perfect that lien is file a notice of lien, and you're, either your staff can do it, or your general counsel can do it, it's a very simple, quick process, and I'll work with them to make sure they do it, that they, we call it perfecting your lien, so you can collect on it at a future date.
So we need to give some kind of record, right?
Yes, and as long as the fees are reasonable, you know, they're, you know, all the cities do it, most of the cities do it, and I'm sure, you know, he's gonna follow a schedule, and there's gonna be a cost, and you're gonna attach that cost as a lien, kinda like a mechanic's lien, and then, once he gets that done, and then, once we take the judgment, we're gonna try to collect on that too, and if they don't pay it, then that's when we come in, we foreclose on the taxes and on the lien, we foreclose on both. And I'm actually glad I was here today, so we can actually work this out together.
Once we pass it today, when do we start?
Okay, if you look at page four, Commissioner?
Page four?
Yeah, it says about noticing the people, it does call for, you know-
There's a hearing that's called for, Judge.
I'm sorry?
There's a hearing that's called for, by you.
No, no, this is a notification of nuisance for the procedure, and then there's a hearing later, and it also has a process, but on the initial, you go and you post for thirty-one days, and then if they don't respond, and you have to post-
We post, they post a sign up there?
Yeah, what we'll do, we'll make a, similar to what- The city.
Judge, my recommendation, Judge, I think we're gonna have a thousand and one questions right now, and there's a bunch of scenarios we can go through, if we can go ahead and pass it and have a workshop, so we can work all these out, that's a much better thing. My recommendation is for you all to pass it, and come back, and we can have a workshop.
Yeah.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, but anyhow, it's not that, once we approve, you all can go in.
No.
We need to wait, yeah. I have a motion in second, all in fair, please, aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
Judge, Commissioners, may I be excused, I have a couple of business matters to attend to, if you need me in executive, I'll be happy to come down.
Okay.
Hey, we do, I got a question, maybe, we'll do yours first, and then-
Okay, it is eleven oh five, in pursuant to section 551.074 and 551.087, we'll go into executive session to discuss order of salaries, to discuss 2019 TAC Safety Equipment Program, and for the purpose of deliberation on economic development negotiations. We'll be back shortly. It's eleven fifty-five, and we're back in open session, under order of salaries.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve as presented, discussion, all in fair, please, aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Item, the other item was to discuss our safety equipment program.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve as presented, discussion, all in fair, please, aye. Oppose? Motion carries. And on the economic development negotiation, I stepped out of the room, Commissioner, I don't know what we discussed.
I was gonna say, yes, Your Honor, on the other, item twenty-six, on economic development, I'd like to have a motion to, to approve industrial foundation to negotiate with, what's the name?
Starr Solar Ranch.
Starr Solar Ranch, yeah, LC.
I move to add a figure.
I second, Your Honor.
It's been moved by Commissioner Alvarez, taken by Commissioner Peña, any discussion? And I'll lose favor, signature, and aye.
Aye.
All opposed and signed, let the record show that the judge did not participate in any voting or discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner, and then the last thing, well, no, that was it, that was the last thing, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
Moved in second, all in fair, please, aye. Oppose? Motion carries.